This city council meeting to order. This is only our second meeting with our new big screen, so we're still excited about that. If everyone could just take a moment and silence their cellphones, just double-check, and then please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several proclamations tonight, but we're going to begin with employee recognitions. I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gary Jackson.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. One recognition, which we won't be doing here, but got a lot of attention last night. We're so very excited, and thank you, members of council and mayor, for coming to the police department's recognition last night. And that got a lot of media coverage, but great stories to be told, a lot of commendations. And I would encourage everybody to go to the media sites and the websites to see the annual honorees for Employee of the Year, Civilian of the Year, and so forth. And we're real proud of the police department and the commendations that took place last night. This evening, I'd like to do two commendations. One is for the Asheville Fire Department, and the other is for a multi-disciplinary team. And so, to begin with, if I could have the Asheville Fire Department reaccreditation team come forward. Battalion Chief Wes Rogers, Senior Firefighter Trey Young, Engineer Ken Myrick, Lieutenant Rich Russianbach, and GIS Technician Stephanie Osborne. And if the chief's here, please come forward, too. That would be Chief Scott Burnett. Real proud of this team. This is the third time that the Asheville Fire Department received the accreditation. This is national re-accreditation. The model looks at, and this is a team that come from other departments, well-qualified people, and they root through everything from our assessment models and planning, external relations, the physical resources we have, the equipment that we have and its condition, as well as our facilities, our areas of coverage, training, and various different types of competency. It's a very thorough process. It's how many months? Begins about five years. About five years worth, 60 months. So, it takes a team, and they're very thorough. But what it does is it forces the department, encourages and incents the department to look at everything internally so they're ready. And so, this is the team that made sure we were ready. Isn't that right, chief? And they worked very, very well together. And I will tell you, my personal experience, meeting with the reviewers as they were wrapping up, is they commended this group for their preparation, and they commended the entire department for being top-notch, not just passing the accreditation, but they left here telling us we should not have to worry about the accreditation, that we should be very proud of the Fire Department. So, for the team that brought us to this place, chief and your command staff are leading the department, and every employee in the department that makes it what it is today, I'd like to ask everybody to give my hand a round of applause. All right, the next recognition, and this is a project that some people said couldn't be done. And after you see it, you'll believe it is a pretty monumental improvement over what we had before. That's the Azalea Road improvements. So, if I could have the following team come up for that. McCray Coats, Tim Bayless, Amy Dayton, Steve Schoeff, Al Kopp, Stephanie O'Connor, Erin Marie Wheeler, Tony McDowell, Greg Schuler, Kathy Ball, Dan Ferris, and Tom Rathbone. This team includes stormwater professionals, engineers, water department staff, management, get-or-done people, finance, budget management, Republic Works Director, Executive Director of Planning and Infrastructure, Communication Team, and many others that I'm leaving out. This is a representative sample here tonight. But this project is incredible. These are the roadway and river improvements that start at the River Road and go out to the rec center. The bridge that was installed takes you into John B. Lewis Soccer Field, to the parking area. There's a roundabout, and you can circulate back and miss the big rock on your way out Azalea Road and avoid going into the ditch. There's actually a railing there now. But this is an incredible project, improving traffic safety. You're probably getting compliments on a regular basis from mothers, fathers, teenage brothers and sisters. You're driving people out there on a regular basis. But I would encourage the entire community to go out and see it. There is a celebration event scheduled for Saturday. We hope for good weather at 1:00 PM, and hope everybody can make it out for that. This project consisted of several partnerships, just like the multi-disciplinary team here represented by staff. But we also want to extend our appreciation for this monumental project to North Carolina Department of Water Resources, our Asheville Water Department for extending a water line. We didn't have potable water to that facility until this project was done. The North Carolina Department of Transportation, and everyone who, in some measure, contributes to the City of Asheville Stormwater Plan. This is funded in part by that as well. The Corps of Engineer part in this is going to be real important moving forward as well. This is not only a transportation and mobility improvement, but we're also expecting to move into the second phase, which our stormwater staff are working closely with the Corps of Engineers on. We expect to lower the flood level in Biltmore Village as a result of the second phase of this project. So, everybody wins as a result of this project. So, if you'll join me in commending this remarkable team for putting this together, it took how many years in the planning, construction? Three and a half, four years, but who's counting? It took a lot to put this together, and it's a remarkable improvement over what was there before. So, congratulations.
And our first one is a proclamation concerning Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. And we have Nancy and Jim Hall here with us today, and Councilman Cecil Bothwell will present the proclamation.
Can we have some people from our partners?
Please, please have all of your guests join you.
As I mentioned last year during this proclamation, my father suffered from Parkinson's, and that's certainly more and more on my mind as I get older, because I'm reaching the age where his symptoms first appeared. And to the extent that it's genetic, it's a concern of mine, as it is to many of you, I'm sure, whose families have had Parkinson's. And here's kind of a funny angle on it. My dad was a diehard Republican, and most of you know I'm not. He voted for a Democrat for the White House for the first time in 1992, because Bill Clinton was for stem-cell research for Parkinson's. And he switched parties because he thought there was some hope that it would help him. Politics makes strange bedfellows, I guess. Here's the proclamation. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic, progressive neurological disease, and it is the second-most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States, and is the 14th-leading cause of death in the United States, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas there is inadequate data on the incidence and prevalence of Parkinson's disease, but it is estimated to affect 500,000 to 1,500,000 people in the United States, and the prevalence will more than double by 2040. And whereas it is estimated that the economic burden of Parkinson's disease is at least $14.4 billion annually, including indirect costs to patients and family members of $6.3 billion. And whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause and progression of the disease is still unknown, and there is no objective test or biomarker for Parkinson's disease, and the rate of misdiagnosis can be high. And whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary from person to person, and can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. And whereas there is no objective test or biomarker for Parkinson's disease, and there is no cure, therapy, or drug to slow or halt the progression of Parkinson's disease. And whereas local, regional, and state volunteers, researchers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's disease and their families. And whereas increased education and research is needed to find more effective treatments with fewer side effects, and ultimately a cure for Parkinson's disease. Now therefore, I, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim April 2014 as Parkinson's Awareness Month in the City of Asheville, and encourage all citizens to raise awareness of this disease.
Unfortunately, very little is known about the brain. One of the goals of President Obama's proposed Brain Initiative through the National Institutes of Health, NIH, is to find a better treatment and cures for neurological diseases such as Parkinson's and Alzheimer's. In the past few years, Parkinson's research at NIH has been cut by almost $19 million. It has recovered some, but not nearly as quickly enough. More, not less, is research is needed. It's cost-effective. Now, federal senate action is urgently needed to permanently repeal caps on Medicare, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech-language therapy services. There was an exception expectations process for medically necessary services, but it expired on March 21. An amendment pending in the Senate will permanently repeal the caps and protect access for people with Parkinson's and millions of living with chronic diseases. To receive more information about Parkinson's and legislative action, alert, contact Parkinson's Action Network. The Asheville Parkinson's Disease Support Group meets on the first Tuesday monthly. Nicole Hansen is president. He's here.
Nicole is here.
Attending support group meetings helps people have the best possible quality of life while living with Parkinson's. I'm in my 21st year living with Parkinson's. Thank you very much for raising awareness about Parkinson's disease.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
I'd please like to introduce Kim Campbell, who's the Administrator in Charge of the Neurology Department at Mission Hospital. The Tourists also issued a proclamation to strike out Parkinson's, and she is working on a Tourist ballgame on Sunday, April 19. And she has another event I would like her to please tell you about.
So, just to kind of reiterate that, this is our third year partnering with the Asheville Tourists to our Parkinson's awareness. It's Sunday at 2:05 is the first pitch, and our neurosurgeon, Dr. Richard Lidle, who implants the deep brain stimulator, which is a surgical procedure for Parkinson's patients, will throw out the first pitch, so we invite you for that. We also have an event on April 30 that will be held at Mahak at 4:00 PM in the afternoon, which is a community awareness and education event for anyone interested in additional information about Parkinson's disease. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and Jennifer Nelson and Katie Swanson are here for that. I'll come down. I'll read the proclamation, and then you can say a few words. Whereas the problem of child abuse and neglect affects many of our children and has reached epidemic proportions, with over 5 million children reported as abused and/or neglected every year in the United States, and over 129,000 in North Carolina, and 4,687 reports of abuse and neglect in Buncombe County last year. And whereas North Carolina faces a continuing need to support programs to prevent child abuse and assist parents and family members when child abuse occurs, and whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is the responsibility of all citizens, and whereas every child has a right to a safe, healthy, nurturing environment free from abuse, and whereas community action is needed to help prevent child abuse so that all children can have the opportunity to reach their potential. And whereas it is vital that we join forces with the Child Protection Team of Buncombe County, Child Abuse Prevention Services Incorporated, Mission Health and Buncombe County Health and Human Services, to reach out to parents and children to increase awareness, prevent child abuse and neglect, strengthen families, and assist children and families who have experienced abuse. Now therefore, I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Asheville, and call upon every citizen to observe this month by joining with Child Abuse Prevention Services, Mission Health Buncombe Health and Human Services, and the Community Child Protection Team, and with community groups and individuals to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities.
I'm Leslie Hansen. I am with Child Abuse Prevention Services, and I'm here with Lynn Pfeifer, also a partner on the Board of Directors. The numbers that you just heard, read, are staggering, but we also know from national research that only a fraction of the cases that are reported actually reflect true occurrences. So, there's a great need here in Asheville and in Buncombe County for child abuse prevention and for services to those children who have experienced abuse. Our agency provides crisis counseling for children who have been abused and their families, and we also provide education in the school system to our children to help them avoid situations where abuse might occur. This is truly a collaborative effort between our agency and other nonprofit agencies in the community and other departments in the city and in the county as well. We thank you for this.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Nielsen, and I serve as the District Administrator for the Guardian Edleyham Program of Buncombe County, and I'm also the Chair of the Community Child Protection Team/Child Fatality Prevention Team here in Buncombe County. But most importantly, my role is that of a mother to biologic, adopted, and foster children. I'm proud of the strong sense of community responsibility we have here in Asheville. Collaboration and cooperation are the norm instead of a goal that we're working towards, like in other counties. Complex problems like child abuse and neglect require a coordinated community response, and the Child Protection Team is proud to be working with a diverse group of community stakeholders, some of whom are here today, to specifically create a plan to address the most vulnerable of our children, those who are age six and under. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Katie Swanson, and I'm a program administrator with Health and Human Services, and I'm over the Child Protective Services units. And I just wanted to say, we have 282 children in foster care in Asheville and Buncombe County, and any prevention we can do to keep children out of custody is what we want to spend our time doing. And the community is our eyes and ears for children. And so, anything we can do before children enter custody is what we want to do, and we're completely behind that. And we thank you so much for bringing this awareness to our community.
Next proclamation we have is Child Sexual Abuse Prevention Month, and I think Laura Warren is here. And Councilwoman Gwen Whistler will present the proclamation.
Whereas the problem of child sexual abuse is likely the most prevalent health problem children face with the most serious array of consequences. And whereas about 1 in 10 children will be sexually abused before their 18th birthday, and whereas about 1 in 7 girls and 1 in 25 boys will be sexually abused before they turn 18. And whereas the estimated annual economic impact of child sexual abuse to Buncombe County is $1.7 million. And whereas every child has a right to a safe, healthy, nurturing environment free from abuse, and whereas it is fitting and proper to expect the community to help prevent child sexual abuse, and whereas it is vital that we reach out to parents, family, organizations, and children to increase awareness, prevent child sexual abuse, and assist children and families who have experienced child sexual abuse with the healing process. Now therefore, I, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Child Sexual Prevention Month in the City of Asheville, and call upon every citizen to observe this month by joining with the Asheville YMCA and with community groups and individuals in the observance of this month with their appropriate programs and activities. And witness whereof, I have therefore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Asheville, North Carolina, to be affixed this 14th day of April 2015.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you. I'm Laura from the YMCA of Western North Carolina, and I get very passionate about this, so pardon me, but I would like to thank the city just for recognizing the great work that the YMCA does. I would also like to thank and recognize our mission for being socially responsible, being the leader in preventing child sexual abuse. I'd also like to thank Paul Vest and Jim Spearon for their commitment to this issue, as well as my leadership Asheville team.
We need your team up here. Come on, everybody.
Okay, come on. Jeff, come on. Paul and Jim, would you like to come up?
Not optional. Come on.
So, I feel so fortunate to work for an organization that takes this so strong and is the leader in spreading awareness for our city. We have the ability to serve you personally or as an organization to prevent, recognize, and react responsibly to the reality of child sexual abuse. 80% of children, sexual abuse goes unreported. This year, there will be 400,000 babies born in the U.S. that will become victims of child sexual abuse unless we do something to prevent it. In 2013, Buncombe County had 4,900 reported cases of child sexual abuse. 90% of children who are victims of child sexual abuse know their abuser. 30% of the children who are sexually abused are abused by a family member. 60% of children who are sexually abused are abused by people that their family trusts. This is not stranger danger. It's not. For an abuser, they must have three things. First thing is access, privacy, and control. If we remove any of those, then the abuse will be prevented. So, let's speak loud, let's speak often, and ask many questions, and let's work together as a community to put an end to this. Thank you very much.
Our final proclamation for the evening is Asheville Neighborhood Cleanup Day, and I believe Dawn Chavez is here for that proclamation. And Councilman Chris Pelley is coming down front to present that proclamation. And please, anyone associated with this proclamation, come forward.
Mayor, this is an exciting proclamation, because for the first time this weekend, the City of Asheville Neighborhood Advisory Committee and the Asheville Green Works will be collaborating on a citywide cleanup in as many neighborhoods as possible here, and this proclamation celebrates that, and then Dawn's going to give us a few words afterward. Whereas the City of Asheville Neighborhood Advisory Committee and Asheville Green Works are collaborating to hold the inaugural Citywide Neighborhood Cleanup Day on Saturday, April 18, 2015. And whereas residents of every neighborhood are invited to participate in this event from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on the 18th. And whereas it is fitting and proper for citizens to work together to clean up their city, and whereas when neighbors work together on civic improvements, it strengthens the bonds of community and increases neighborhood cohesiveness. And whereas city residents, working in teams or working alone, will clean up litter and also help clear debris from city stormwater catch basins and drains. And whereas neighborhoods are encouraged to recruit volunteers and choose a neighborhood captain who will obtain the necessary supplies from Asheville Green Works prior to the Cleanup Day. Whereas participants are encouraged to bring their own safety and cleanup gear, and Asheville Green Works will provide gear for the day for those who need it. Now therefore, I, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim April 18 as Citywide Neighborhood Cleanup Day in the City of Asheville, and commend all citizens to join together and help us clean up their neighborhoods.
Thank you, Councilman. And thank you, Ms. Mayor. Asheville Green Works is very glad to collaborate with the Neighborhood Advisory Committee on this special day, and all year round for our cleanups. Each year, Asheville Green Works coordinates 190 projects-plus volunteer projects with almost 3,000 volunteers. Last year, in 2014 alone, our volunteers collected 18 and 1/2 tons of trash along our road sides and streams, which is an enormous amount. We get calls every other day, and I'm sure the city receives calls, too, from residents complaining about litter along the sides of the road. And this proclamation for this Neighborhood Cleanup Day is important, because it recognizes the roles and responsibilities of every resident, and gives them the encouragement and support to get out there and clean up their neighborhoods and make Asheville green and clean. So, thank you for this opportunity.
I want to highlight, this is Ms. Chavez's first time to city council, and relatively new, is your second time? Okay. Relatively new. You're relatively new as the executive director for Asheville Green Works, so welcome again.
Mayor, this is Bob Ropnik, who's both a member of the Neighborhood Advisory Committee and of Asheville Green Works Board of Directors.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say. Thank you very much. My name is Bob Ropnik, and I have the pleasure of serving on the Neighborhood Advisory Committee and on the board at Asheville Green Works, where we just went through our lengthy selection process, that you now have had the opportunity to meet Dawn and see the outcome of that, which we're very excited about. But I'm also hopeful that this particular collaboration with the city, as a recognition of a Cleanup Day, could also lead to additional collaboration with Asheville Green Works in not just cleanups, but plantings and other types of beautification for our neighborhoods. I want to thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. (applause)
Okay, it's not on here, but one more item before we go to the consent agenda is wishing Shannon Tuck a happy birthday. I put you on the spot. Okay, we, next we have our consent agenda. Is there any item on our consent agenda that anyone would, has a question about or wants to have considered separately? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Tie for second? Anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda? All those in, oh, you know what? I did have one person sign up to speak, Suzanne Stoke, for the public comment period, but it's, but it seems to be that what you wanted to speak about is actually on the consent agenda, so not required. Okay, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've approved the consent agenda. Next is the legislative update, and just briefly, I'm going to mention that the legislature is still in session, as you all know, and we're quickly approaching the crossover date, which is the date where all the bills that are going to stay alive have to cross from one chamber to the other. And the crossover date is April 30. So we will see a flurry of activity probably from now until April 30. That does not necessarily mean any of that legislation will become law, but if it is to become law, it needs to get over to the other chamber before, before April 30. We're still tracking several, several important bills. I think the one that is of most concern, I mean, there's many bills that are of concern to cities, but the one that still remains of most concern to cities is the sales tax redistribution legislation. We have two bills in the Senate, Senator Brown and Senator Ruccio have two different versions that differ, but both seek to redistribute sales tax in the state. And Buncombe County is, is hit pretty hard in that legislation. So we're looking at that. And there, there are a number of land use bills. There's a rewrite of, of all the land use statutes pending, and that's a work in progress. I have been notified that there is a building code reg reform bill that it has both the House and Senate version that would allow for materials to be used in building, buildings that may not be the greatest, greatest for safety concerns. So we're looking at that bill. Anyway, we continue to track the legislation. I'll be going down to Raleigh next week and hope to meet with different people, get a better feel for what really may become a reality this session and what might not, and to be able to have conversations with folks about that. Anything, anyone else have a concern, want to highlight?
Question. Last year, when the legislature repealed the, or took away the business privilege license, and at that time, they had said that they would come around this year with a fix for cities for that. And I'm wondering if there's any sign that they're following through on that.
Absolutely none. And it is not anticipated that we will see any legislation replacing the privilege license tax or in any way addressing the gap. And for Asheville, that's $1.5 million, an amount of a general fund of around $100 million. That's a significant hit for us, but there, nothing's been introduced. There is nothing even a murmur in the legislative halls about restoring that or somehow otherwise addressing it. And in fact, it only kind of gets worse with the sales tax redistribution legislation. Wrong direction.
Just to take that point a step further, the sales tax, these different bills introduced in the Senate could also mean either one of more than a million dollar hit to the city's budget. So the, the privilege license tax plus the sales tax could create a hole of about, between $2.5 and $3 million in the city's general fund budget. And that's, our general fund budget is actually a little less than $100 million. So we're talking about a significant amount of money that, that council is, as we began our budget season trying to shape up a budget that will begin July 1st for the fiscal year, the next 12 months after that, we've got unusual challenges this year.
Well, when the leadership in Raleigh said, "We'll fix you," we know what they meant.
Okay, so that's the legislative update. And next, we have our, the public hearings segment of our agenda. We have one item on the public hearings agenda. That is a public hearing to consider amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance to include reasonable accommodation procedures. And we have Catherine Hoffman making her debut appearance before city council, one of our newer attorneys in, in our legal division. And we're already having monitor issues. So here we go. Maggie, there we go. Not for long. There we go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Catherine Hoffman. I'm an Assistant City Attorney. And this is a public hearing to consider amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance to provide for procedure for handicapped and disabled persons to request and obtain a reasonable accommodation from UDO provisions pursuant to federal law. So before I get into the UDO changes, I want to give an overview of the federal statutory protection. So the Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act both prohibit discrimination against protected individuals. The Fair Housing Act applies specifically to housing opportunities, and the Disabilities Act applies more generally to discrimination. The Fair Housing Act uses the phrase "handicapped" while the Disability Act uses the phrase "disability," but they're both defined the same. A handicap is a physical or mental impairment which substantially limits one or more of such person's major life activities. Now, while a handicap or disability may include a person who is currently recovering from substance abuse, it does not include the current illegal use of or addiction to a controlled substance. So to eliminate discrimination, the Fair Housing Act requires local governments to make a reasonable accommodation in the rules, policies, practices, or procedures when such an accommodation may be necessary to afford a person an equal opportunity to the use and enjoyment of dwelling. So what we're recommending today is that the city adopt a procedure for individuals who are requesting a reasonable accommodation for their applications to be reviewed and processed. And we're specifically requesting that the Board of Adjustment hold a quasi judicial hearing. So before going into why, the specific process, I want to tell you why we are recommending this process for Asheville. In July of 2007, the United States Department of Justice informed the city that it opened an investigation into the zoning and land use practices of the city. Specifically, the Department of Justice is interested in the city's treatment of residential housing for persons in recovery from substance abuse. You remember, persons who are recovering from substance abuse are protected under federal law, but persons who are currently engaged in illegal use of drugs are not. So between July 2011 and January of 2013, the Department of Justice requested additional information from the city, which we provided. Thereafter, we didn't hear much from them. So in November of 2014, we contacted the Department of Justice to inquire about their investigation. And at that time, they told us that they would like to see the city's process for disabled or handicapped persons to request a reasonable accommodation. Now, while the city has practices and procedures which would allow for reasonable accommodation, the Department of Justice provided us with examples from other jurisdictions, which they've accepted in the past. So we've created some draft provisions, which we have provided to the Department of Justice, and we've incorporated all of their suggested comments and edits. And this is also would be in the best interest of the city because it provides a clear and specific process. So there's four proposed UDO amendments. The first would be the creation of a new Section 7-63, which would be the bulk of the Reasonable Accommodation Ordinance. We would also need to make three smaller changes in order to make the UDO consistent with the new Section 763. And you have in your staff report full drafts of all of these ordinance changes, but I'll go through them quickly. So Section 763 would have five subsections, a purpose statement, a list of eligible applicants, eligible requests, some specifications on applications, and also the review process. Of note, eligible applicants are going to be persons defined as disabled or handicapped under federal law. The application will outline exactly what needs to be included, so applicants are aware of what they need to have in their application. It will also tell them where to receive an application, where to turn it back in, and there will be no application fee. So the applications will be reviewed, and a termination will be made by the Board of Adjustment. It will be a quasi judicial hearing. There'll be notice of the hearing, and at the hearing, the board may either grant or deny the application, and must accompany with their decision written findings of fact and conclusions of law. Within the ordinance are going to be specific time limits for when the board must hold their hearing and issue a decision, and any appeal will be to Buncombe County Superior Court. The standard of review at the board will be based on competent material and substantial evidence that the proposed accommodation will meet the following three things. First, that the person is protected under federal law, and second, that it's reasonable and necessary, and those terms are defined in the ordinance. So a couple other small changes. The title to Article 6 will have to be changed to include reasonable accommodations. We would have to add to the powers and duties of the Board of Adjustment the ability to approve and hear applications. And we would also have to, in the Use by Right section for family care homes, remove the section allowing variances to residential development standards since we will have the reasonable accommodation process. So we're recommending approval of the UDO amendments specifying and setting forth a quasi judicial procedure for qualified individuals to obtain a reasonable accommodation. We went to Planning and Zoning Commission, and they voted unanimously to approve or to recommend approval. And again, it's in the best interest of the city and hopefully will help us with the Department of Justice. So I went through that very quickly, but if you have any questions about any specifics, I'm here, and Shannon Tuck is here. He's been working with us and Robin as well.
Anyone have any questions? It was very thorough, and we appreciated the graphics.
I was trying not to zoom me.
Catherine actually told me once that she really loves legal research, and I appreciate the depth and thoroughness. I really do. Not, not everybody's cut out to do it the way you do, so great. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to provide comment on this agenda item? I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the text amendments to the UDO, which adds Section 763, and which revise Article 6, Section 733, and Section 71613, and find that these amendments are reasonable in the public interest and are consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans because they provide a procedure to protect individuals against discrimination and to request a reasonable accommodation under federal law.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes our public hearings. We have no unfinished business. We have a few items under new business. The first is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to amend the interlocal agreement with Henderson County and effectuate the sale of the Ferry Road property to Buncombe County. Kathy Ball is here to talk to us about this.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, as the mayor's indicated, we are talking about an interlocal agreement that was entered into with Henderson County in April of 2014. Henderson County is now in the process of selling the property in question, and as part of that sale, has asked the City of Asheville to amend the interlocal agreement to, on one specific issue, which is to allow, it specified that the county had to use its share of the proceeds for the sale, for the purchase and construction of a local law enforcement training center. Henderson County no longer has that need, and so they're requesting that the interlocal agreement be waived. Additionally, the purpose of this is just to allow council to approve this change and allow the mayor to enter into any other agreements that would need to be entered into for the sale of this property.
I was going to add one thing to, the mayor asked that we actually prepare a black line so you could see exactly what the differences were. And I think Maggie has left those at your, at your place. So if you want to take a look at what the, what the black line looks like, as well as the revised resolution.
On logistics, do we need a vote first on the interlocal agreement, just the amendment to the interlocal agreement, paragraph 6? Do you see where it is? Okay. And then do a vote on the sale part, or one vote?
Janice, is there a vote on the sale part?
Well, the, the authorizing me to enter into...
I think you can do it all in one, one vote. I wanted to check with my expert there, so...
Are there any questions? A motion? This isn't a public hearing, so I don't open up all the...
I'll move to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the documents necessary to amend the interlocal agreement and to effectuate the sale of the Ferry Road property to Buncombe County.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion?
Mayor and council members, my name is Tim Harrison. I'm a resident of Asheville. I have reviewed the staff report and the interlocal agreement and had a couple of comments in the form of questions, which I don't know if you can address those at this time or not, but the, the agreement is contingent upon the property being conveyed to the county for economic development use. And my understanding is that the county is now working with a undisclosed potential buyer of the property for development purposes. However, my understanding is that this particular buyer is also considering four other locations outside of North Carolina as possible sites for their operations. And so the question I have is, because this has a contingency related to economic development, if it's sold to the county, is there any contingency within the contract which either gives the city oversight over future potential buyers if this, if this current negotiation does not work out, where the city can continue to require the county to use it for economic development, or is there a reversion provision in the contract where it would come back to the city if the county chose not to sell it to, for economic purposes? It's a little vague in this report as to whether this just relates to the current negotiations going on with, with, by the county, or whether this is an ongoing provision of the agreement. So if you can address that if possible, I'd appreciate it.
Do you have any other? That was it? That was the one question? Okay.
Okay. Janice Ashley, can you? Has been working very hard and diligently on this, and I think is the best person to respond to.
Yes, it will be an ongoing provision that this property needs to be, it's part of the interlocal agreement, and that stays in place. You're only amending that one portion. The condition that that property always be used for an economic development purpose pursuant to the Economic Development Statute is stays there, and there's also a provision that they grant an easement to the city for a greenway. And so those do not go away with the sale of this property.
No, those were provisions that have, that were, have stood for several months from our original action.
They're right.
They're in the interlocal, the current interlocal agreement. Yes, that will continue.
And they're in the Local Act, too, isn't it? That the Local Act says the sale has to be pursuant to the interlocal agreement. So that's sort of a two double.
And the deed to the, the deed to the property, I've reviewed the deed, and it will refer to the interlocal agreement and those conditions that will continue.
Good question. Ready with the answer? That was good. Okay. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. Anyone else wishing to comment on the motion? All right. If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next is an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2015/16 fees and charges. And Tony McDowell is here to talk to us about this. Every year, when we get into the budget cycle, we like to do the fees and charges first, so staff knows for sure what council's going to approve so they can build it into their budget. So Tony, take it away. Do you have a, I can't wait to see your presentation.
I have some slides if council would like to see. Otherwise, I can just quickly introduce the topic and let you all discuss it. And Mayor, you're correct. We do bring the fees to you early on in the budget process to allow you to go ahead and consider those. And if you adopt them, then we can build the revenue from those fees into next year's budget. It also allows us to begin an early effort to communicate any fee changes out to the public before they become effective on July 1st. public before they become effective on July 1st. The fee packet this year, it's a fairly modest package that we bring before you this year. In the general fund, there are a few minor changes. There's also a few minor changes in the transit fund as well. The most notable changes that I would want to point out to council are in the water and stormwater funds. And both of the changes, the changes that are being recommended in both those funds represent continuations of the multi-year financial plans and financial analyses that we brought before you last fiscal year. Just to give you an idea of the magnitude of those changes, for the average water and stormwater users, the fee changes will lead to an additional $6.60 increase next year in their fees, which comes out to about 55 cents a month. The fees that are before you tonight were reviewed by the Finance Committee at their March 24th meeting. I would point out that there was one fee proposal that we brought before the committee on March 24th to adjust the solid waste fee. That is not included in your package tonight. Staff will bring that back and discuss that more with the budget on April 28th and in subsequent budget work sessions. So with that, I'll turn it over to you all. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those. We also have some staff from departments here as well that can help answer questions.
Questions?
Just kind of a refresher. The water fees, this is something that we looked at years ago. We had a consultant group come in and have a look at all of our water charges. And as I recall, and someone correct me if I'm wrong here, I'm just looking for confirmation, that what was determined over the course of that study was that residential users were paying out of proportion to commercial users. And so we set about a multi-year course to try to correct that inequity there, and that what we're seeing here today is the next step in a multi-year plan, and it doesn't vary from that plan that we'd set up years ago.
That's spot on.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Questions? All right, do I have a motion?
Move to approve the proposed fee changes for the next fiscal year.
Second. Okay. Motion and a second. Anyone wishing to comment on the motion? You guys are a lively bunch tonight. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we have Boards and Commissions, and I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Three items to tend to tonight. First of all, just an announcement. We are coming up, over the next three months, on the time to make appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And as many will recall, when we appoint to both the school board and Planning and Zoning Commissions, we have more in-depth processes that involve submission of applications, written questions and responses from the applicants, then live interviews here in council chambers before we would vote. And so that's going to be the case with the planning and zoning process coming up. We just wrapped one of those up last month with the school board, so it could be familiar to several, to you guys. So the due date for applications for Planning and Zoning Commission will be July 28th. The City Clerk, Maggie Burleson, will publicize that through our media channels and elsewhere, and so I want to make sure the public is aware that that opportunity and those openings are coming up. Civil Service Board, we have two openings that need to be filled with new candidates. The current occupants of those seats are not going to pursue the seats for another round. So we'll have two appointments to make. The Boards and Commissions Committee, those seats are currently open. Boards and Commissions Committee recommends that we extend the application process to May 6th. Currently, we have one application in for the two spots. We want to encourage folks to apply, encourage folks to help us find good applicants. The Civil Service Board has some authorities, a board that functions to review grievances on the part of employees. That is the key responsibility. It has some other authority and functions as well. A little bit of a technical challenge in being on that board and a willingness to work and sometimes attend some lengthy meetings where grievances are heard. So very important, very critical board to have good participation in. Please help us find good applicants. We need more by May 6th. Finally, we have two openings on the Hub Community Economic Development Alliance. Two openings to be filled. We currently have six applications. The Boards and Commissions Committee earlier this afternoon discussed this, and we recommend that the following four people be interviewed by City Council to fill those for selection to those seats. Those four that we recommend: Kendra Pendlin, Adrian Vasallo, Hunter Guzman, and Ed Manning. So I would put that suggestion from the committee to council, to see if there are other additional folks to interview, or if everyone's fine, we can move forward with interviewing those four.
Lynn looks like she really wants to add someone.
Yes, I'd like to add Ted Figueroa.
Add Ted Figueroa, sure. In our practice, if any council member wants to expand the field of interviews, we'll do that. So we're at five now, to include Ted Figueroa. Will you all good with that? Nods. Great. And Maggie, the interviews will be on?
In two weeks. Council has a budget work session at 3:00. I'm not sure what kind of Finance Committee it is that day, so you might be into the 1:00, 1:30 time frame on Mondays.
Maggie will work on the specifics of the timing, and we'll get that squared with calendars and the applicants. We'll learn that directly from Maggie.
Maggie, I wondered about the current members of the Hub per this attachment. I don't know, it didn't seem like there were some that, it didn't seem right. I just wondered if we had a current list.
I try to get that updated. I'll check with Mr. Brown on that.
Hey.
Figuratively or philosophically?
I know our city appointments are current, whether the rest of the commission is or not. I'll just need to double check.
Okay. All right, that concludes Boards and Commissions. All right, that concludes our agenda tonight. I do have two folks signed up for public comment. The first is Christopher Charmante.
Madam Mayor, City Council, first thing I'd like to do is, I don't know who was involved in this, but I want to thank you, because I understand that when you fly into Asheville, the first face you get to see is mine. There's a beautiful painting in the Asheville Airport of me. So I want to thank the airport and the City Council for the free advertising. Now, let's say it to the Lord. Actions speak louder than words. Some of you have said you are Christians, yet there's still no prayer. And God said for me to say this: If you were to die tonight and stand before the Lord in his great judgment seat, by what right would you have to come in? Would he not have the right to say, "Hard for me, I don't know you. But the word is said to be, deny me before man, I will deny you before the Father. And by you who say you're Christians, by keeping your mouths shut, are denying the Son." Now, that's done with. It has always been church tradition for little monks like me to be able to go, let me get my little prop here, alms for the poor. I've always been against panhandling ordinance. Greenville has a great one, one-time ask. If you check with your former city district attorney, no, county district attorney, you might want to make a check on this first before you make a decision, because I will be standing downtown like St. Francis of Assisees, convicting the hearts of the lost. Sir, can you spare a poor monk a dime in the name of Jesus? Church tradition goes back thousands of years. H.R. 1308, almost won the pot for my church, by the way. The Assistant Attorney General of North Carolina will tell you, I won. They wouldn't read it. They should go to the Supreme Court. Well, H.R. 1308 is not a prejudicial of the gaze. What it is, is a test. A right for me to stand in front of the court and say, my right to say, "Alms for the poor." Who has a greater right, the state or me? That is a test, is all it is. If the state wins, I can't do it. If I win, and you make me go to court, I will have hundreds. Every street corner will have somebody with my card, giving them the authority to ask for alms. And I will have one, and you will not be able to do anything. That is, if you make me go to court, which means if you give me a ticket. Now, I'm pretty good in court. You want to try me? You want to try God? He's good, too. Question is, you leave me alone, allow me to go alms for the poor, I will leave you alone. You give me a ticket, if I win, and it will only take a year, I will have at every street corner a representative of my church saying, "Alms for the poor."
Thank you. The next person I have signed up to speak is Suzanne Stoke.
No.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak? Please just state your name.
My name is Sabrina Raven. Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't get to speak to this before you voted on the fees and changes. It took me by surprise, and I was busy looking up the information quickly, hoping it wasn't what I thought it was. Your gentleman who spoke earlier talked about changes, plural, to the transit fees. At the last Transit Committee meeting on April 7th, there were two changes mentioned that are in the documents that were included with the agenda today. One was a simple addition of a fee for moving stop lines for construction. That's fine. The other is the complete elimination of the fare-free zone. At the Transit Committee meeting, there was considerable discussion of this, and agreement to table the discussion until next month's meeting, so that there could be an actual public discussion on this. The elimination of the fare-free zone affects people, and at this point, there's been effectively no time for real public discussion of it. If that has gone through without consideration of what the Transit Committee recommended, I'll be very disappointed. Thank you.
I could speak to that briefly.
Please, please do.
Sabrina, thanks for bringing that up and for serving on the Transit Committee. Part of what happens with the fees and charges just getting into the budget cycle is us trying to get through these various items on a calendar, so we can pass a budget by the date required by law. So that's part of what, part of the context. We, when we reviewed the fees at Finance Committee, I had the same question around the downtown fare-free zone. And staff responded, one, and chiefly, that this had become a very difficult problem for the drivers to monitor when people would get on and off and who...
No, we're not doing a conversation. He's just responding.
And who got on during fare-free and who didn't. And so this was, I think this was something that was bubbling up from drivers and from the management company around that. And then the other was the very limited numbers of users that we had who were taking advantage of that. So that's, we had some discussion of it at Finance, and I'm sorry that we didn't, weren't able to align our calendars with Transit Committee in regard to that conversation.
Okay, anyone else wishing to make public comment? All right, if not, we have a closed session. Motion.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143-318.103. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3. And two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will adjourn from the closed session.